Welcome to the March eleventh lowermoreland township board commissioner stated advertised monthly meeting. Please stand and rise for these. My pleasure, you should sit in the house of the United States of America and consider the republic for which it stands. One nation under God and in this law with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone. Just some meeting rules if you would like to address the board please do so at the podium up here in the front. Over the room state your name and address for the record clearly so that they can. Provide the correct information if you'd like to address the board on any non agenda items that those are taken at the end of all our agenda items. We're A to Y tonight. So just to let everyone know the board met in executive session part of the meeting to review personnel matters. So first item is my agenda Denise Kurtz Chair of Internal Affairs Committee. It's review and consider minutes of February 11th, 2025. Does the board have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Dennis you're online any questions or comments?
No questions for me.
Thank you. Okay, no questions from the board anyone from the public? I don't see any anyone on Zoom Leah? Okay. Hearing none I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 11th, 2025. So motion's been moved and seconded to approve the February 11th, 2025 minutes. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed the ayes have it next is review and consider March 2025 bill list. Commissioners any questions or?
I installed my questions.
Thank you Ruth anyone JoJo Dennis?
No questions.
Okay. So public have any public comment regarding the March 2025 bill list? No one in the room anyone on Zoom Leah not I'll make a motion to approve the March 2025 bill list. Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the March 2025 bill list all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed I don't hear any motions passed thank you next is administration report manager Hoffman.
Alright, so four items that I wanted to call out for the board this evening. The first is that I continue to have meetings with construction management firms. So I'm hoping to have five proposals in hand by mid April. We were able to add one more entity to that within the last week and so. Continue making progress there. The next I'm just following last month's conversation regarding the trash and recycling contract. Steve EJ and I got together to talk through all the feedback incorporate what we could into. Into the bit spec and then also talk about some of the additional items that were brought up and possible ways that we can look at proposals for those in the future. So with all of that feedback EJ is now putting together the specification. She'll send that to Steve and I for review and once that is ready we would hope to get that out to bid sometime between like April and June. So that we can have sufficient time to review all the financial components of it. And then also any of the things that need to be implemented in time for January give us about six months to be able to turn all of that around. So good progress from that. The next one I wanted to give an update on the SEPTA interlocking project. Which we had talked about at our last meeting. It's a project that's been concept that has been around for a while SEPTA actually originally started that. On the other side of Red Lion Road opposite Kirk Drive. But I think has made the decision based off of certain elements in the field that make the location behind 2381 Filmon Avenue. Better for them. So just the the things that I wanted to call out that are in my report. It's a project that's going to have a duration of the better part of two years so they're expecting a fall of 2026. Completion and ultimately what they are doing they have an easement for access behind 2381. So before when they had originally told us in the field that they were going to be taking access from Red Lion Road after crossing. That is not the case they have access through one of the businesses on Filmon Avenue. But ultimately they're adding for a brief period a third line of track and then. And switch equipment to be able to move trains across to that third line. In the event that there's anything that might happen on a line that would hinder the the major services in the morning and afternoon. This would give them the ability to get that train in an area not having an impact. It's done essentially mostly in-house by SEPTA teams. So I have contacts for the overall project manager as well as the specific construction manager. There's going to be some work that they do at night because they are not able to to when they need a certain block of time for a portion of the project. Nighttime is the only time that actually provides the adequate window for that. It's important for them to not impact the morning and afternoon rushes when the trains are coming through most regularly. So that was a component that we had learned. The work also is not going to be constant for that two-year period because it's in-house they are doing other projects along the way. So essentially as the teams become available they will come do their focus thing on the site. Whether or not like in the immediate term they are clearing the right of way area that they control. So that involved kind of cutting things back taking down the chain link fence that we've talked about so often in this room. And then there's going to be some grading work that will be focused on the Filmon Avenue side of the tracks. Essentially making the flat base area to be able to add that third line of track. And then I've asked for more detail on on this but the. Equipment that can pulse the switches that will ultimately how the the train moves across the tracks. Those will go into some sort of structure that will be placed. On the kind of outside of the tracks on the Filmon Avenue side so wanting to understand those details as well. So the last thing I did and like I said in the the last email I sent to the the project manager. Was asking for a dedicated contact that we can share with neighbors. While we can certainly be an advocate if there are any issues. I want to be clear about what is the township's regulatory regulatory role or really or not. In this as it's in the SEPTA right of way it's federal law and then PUC that governs this. So for example your construction hours works does not apply here so. If our police are called to the site we're not going to stop them from from doing the work. So just wanted to be clear about that but I asked for that contact because. While we can be that intermediary sometimes if something goes from. Resident to contact to township to SEPTA we're losing the kind of the directness of it or the timing of being able to follow up most effectively. So we want to be able to provide that as well so. So far that's what we know about that project there are components that are underway now but I think it will get a bit more intense. And the bulk of the work. So if you're looking between the businesses on Filmon the rail and then Dale Road the bulk of the work is going to be. And further down than the the older original component of Dale and further down towards the development that was built. I forget that's like early 2000s the bulk of the work is that now. So that is what we know at this point are there any questions from the board?
I have a question. The tracks are the the track where the track the one track that they're proposing that is going to be towards the business side.
Correct.
And the switches that thing.
So they they sit in between the individual tracks.
Okay.
Because essentially if you picture if you're going. Towards Bybury and so you're on the track that's closest to Dale Road the switches would allow you to go from the outside track to the center to the third track.
And I know we don't have any control over this project because it's not our project I want to thank you manager Hoffman for. All the work you've done to be able to. Look into this and bring the information back to us so that at least we can provide the information to the residents. And possibly the contact like you said. Thank you for your research on this bringing it to us and then we can provide the information to the residents especially contact because we don't have any control over this project. So shorten it thank you. Sorry I'm a little low tonight.
And then the last one that I wanted to report on. Was just the comments from last month related to the soliciting and peddling ordinance that the board has. With John here if you could do a 30-second overview of what that ordinance requires how residents can kind of protect themselves from that. And just to be able to give that update.
Sure. In the solicitation ordinance covers anybody that's going door to door selling something except certain. Cases nonprofits. And they're required to be licensed by the police department if they're not licensed by the police department they're violating the ordinance. The police department also has a sign-up list of people who. Can sign up with the police department that don't want to be solicited don't want to be bothered by anybody going door to door. Police department has a decal I understand chief that's supposed to cover. And if you buy that you put that on there and you should not have any solicitation. They solicit you anyway they're again in violation of the ordinance so. Anybody that has a concern about that. I don't know I'm aware or chief's aware of any. A lot of violations to this but they came up with this meeting and that's basically the way it was. You know everyone's supposed to be licensed you can sign up. Do not bother be list basically and you can get your sticker. And if someone continues to knock on your door you report it to the police. Because they're unlicensed or they're violating violating the ordinance.
Jim what about political and religious organizations can you cover that also?
I think we we register them anyway.
No they do not have.
Okay nonprofits and and political. Yeah there's there's there's. More than a few First Amendment cases that. They get a free ride throughout which municipalities.
Just wanted to put it out there.
But it's it's mainly the commercial vendors. That we've had issues with so chief do you give them a do they get a card from you?
They get a an actual permit signed by me a license and they also get a list of all those houses. We give every one of them that the people that are on that do not solicit there. As well as they get a ordinance as well so they have all of that.
Okay. That 30 seconds of us?
Love it.
And chief I I know you also put it either on your Facebook and on your social media.
So everybody knows there are certain ones out let me tell you the business itself so if you see someone that's not that business. Then certainly call us and then you can certainly get those calls.
I could shoot. Does anyone is the board have any other questions or anything that was reviewed manager Hoffman to report? Anyone in the public? Please call.
Down road. This is on a lighter note this is from Mr. George also a down road chief he wants to thank you for posting that on the police department's webpage. Mr. George did read it and he was quite happy with this listener list that was going out to our township so he's not able to make it tonight. But he wanted me to pass that along to you okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And my second thing is the SEPTA issue that's going on. When the tracks they were out there today they removed most of the fencing. But is it possible for the township to send a letter to the people on Dale Road? Just giving them a explanation of what they can expect. During that work time. From night work. To track work. To maybe even what the building's going to look like beyond the homes so they have an idea of what to expect. I mean last month I called the police SEPTA contractors right there at 11:45 with chainsaws. Cutting trees down not emergency work. They woke up probably three or four neighbors. And so if we give the residents just the heads up of what's coming. I think that would be fair to the people on Dale Road I guess we can maybe. Decide who gets the letter. And send it out to them so they know. What to expect that they're not caught off guard because if anybody's been back there they took down everything. They took down the trees that were behind the western property so now. Everybody within that area. Can see straight to Wawa and the gas pumps and the noise hasn't increased because they took that barrier down. So I think it would be fair if the residents had an idea of what was going on behind their homes. SEPTA is not the greatest people to get in touch with they don't give out a lot of information. But I think if the township passed that along to the residents I think it would be only a generous gesture. Thank you.
Chris can we? Without knowing that we don't have any authority or regulation over this project can we just at least? Give by somehow notify the residents.
Come up with a couple of bullet points just here's what to expect and if I can get that as well.
Right and then maybe that contact.
But then also just and and certainly that way then people can be informed and I'll just I'll try to make it so it's kind of understood what expectations they can have.
Right.
On the township side of things because the project is going to proceed. But just hear some details about what to expect.
When they pull permits. With the township right?
Oh they don't. I thought they I thought they had that. That was the that we don't regulate that 50 foot wide right of way we're all about all the track. Infrastructure is.
And this is very very new information for us and like I said I appreciate you were. Researching this further and looking into it to bring to us and at this point I I know. You and Leah and EJ always work on getting something out to the public but. Would be very interested in making sure the public knows a little bit about what's going on back there even though it's not on. Regulatory control. Is everyone on the board okay with that I mean it's something that we would do anyway?
Everybody's saying yes.
Okay Dennis you with that?
Yes I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Can I can I ask one more question?
Sure come on on Mr. McTain.
Mr. They gave you a preliminary sketch. Of actually what's going on back there if that could be added to the letter?
Yeah so. I do have that preliminary sketch it's a plan document that if that were to be printed is probably like 13 feet long. So I'll have to figure out how we can do that it might be something I I can we can maybe upload it to the website. And put a link in the letter where to go find it.
Alright yeah if you can't do it I mean just we're notifying them anyway thank you.
Chris maybe the easier thing to do is if people really want to see it maybe you could say it's available at the township and to come in and that way. If somebody's really interested they can see the detail that they would need to see and probably a good idea if there's if there are issues. You know if we want them to call the police or whatever we want whoever they should call then we can put that in there too.
Great suggestion Dennis thank you. Okay next is the tax collectors report. I see our collect the tax 13 sales on the line hi Jane.
Hi Denise thank you so there's been a little bit of a change from the opening numbers from last month. It was a little over $500 was the difference and that was because there's one parcel in the township. Well there's several that are like this but it is billable for school taxes but not billable for township and county. Because it's predominantly in Brennathen so Brennathen would send township and county taxes. And we send school taxes so that parcel was removed from the township and county. Billing so the opening balances is now eight million 500,956 dollars. As of February 28th we've collected 670,963 dollars which represents 8% of the taxes that were billed. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Alright thank you very much.
Anyone from the public? Okay now thank you Jane I'll accept your report and manager Hoffman's report is submitted thank you. Thanks for being all with us. Next is my liaison report my positions are lowermoreland township school district lowermoreland township. Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee and Community Events. So lowermoreland township school district I attended their February 18th meeting on Zoom and also their meeting last week on March 4th. Just something exciting for the February 18th. That the school district is starting a football team for children. Below ninth grade so I think the whole community is really excited about that it's good for the kids. And the March 4th most important to report and for any information I sent some information to the board. For the public is their the school board is still working on their they're starting to they have started and. Continuing their progress working on the school district budget so. If anybody wants any other information. For lowermoreland school district. Next on the diversity equity and inclusion which is now called excellence and educational equity committee. I attended the January 28th meeting. But there. February we did not have a meeting and the next meeting is scheduled for March 24th. With regard to our community events we have a busy month. We have the Honey Valley Spring Egg Hunt which is sponsored by the lowermoreland township. That'll take place on Sunday April 6th at 2pm at Lowermoreland Park. On Warfield Lane please note it's changed from Saturday to Sunday. Come and meet Peter Rabbit bring your own bag or basket. And arrive early. The library said the eggs go fast and the rain date is Saturday April 12th at 11am at Lowermoreland Park. Next is our township Earth Day event and it's going to take place on a Tuesday April 22nd which is actually Earth Day. In Lowermoreland Park again the Warfield Lane entrance of a. Tree planting a park cleanup Earth Day bags and there isn't any RSVP required for that. We also have another Earth Day event with Lowermoreland High School Environmental Club. That we've been working with with the environmental club teacher Mr. Tomaccio is the leader of that. Club with the children and we're going to be planting a native holiday recording. And also special thanks to public works because they are. Always helping us with we couldn't do what we do for the township the community and working together collaboratively with the school and the kids. Our Pine Road second grade tour is April 24th and 25th in the morning. So that's great the kids have an opportunity to tour township building the police department. And the center of our town there's two new teachers that are involved in this. And we are going to have a meeting on Friday a Zoom meeting. Ridgeway Park opening ceremony today the playground was completed per director Steve Werner. So Steve informed me they just have to do some topsoil restoration. And I reached out to Commissioner Bland who is unfortunately not able to be with us tonight. Due to a business engagement and I asked Commissioner Bland to pick a few dates and we'll run it by the board. Once we pick one we'll. Roll it out to the residents and the public and we will have a. Opening ceremony. I think that is it that concludes my agenda items for the community events does anyone from the board have any questions? Anyone from the public? Hearing none that concludes my agenda items for this evening. Next the chair recognized Commissioner Mueller Chair Community Development Committee. Dennis is on Zoom with us this evening thanks for being here with us.
Thank you President Kurtz the first item on my agenda is a public hearing for zoning text amendment for NV Homes and Filmon Country Club. And just as a review there the board authorized proceedings to a public hearing for the zoning text amendment. Application submitted by NV Homes at the January meeting the ordinance will. Will amend the minimum lot width for attached homes in the active adult development. As as applied to their project this will allow 28-foot wide unit to be built if selected from a potential buyer. The ordinance was submitted to Lowermoreland and the Montgomery County Planning Commissions as required by the MPC. The LMPC reviewed the ordinance at their February 28th meeting and Solicitor Rice has also advertised the ordinance as prescribed by law. So I guess I I don't know maybe Engineer Woodrow if if you wanted to add any additional comments further explanation. Just to you know just to review. Remind everybody what this is about in a concise way.
Sure Dennis I'd be happy to so recall when we first discussed this ordinance amendment we're talking about the. The configuration of the units at the country club project. It's important to note that this prime those ordinance change does nothing to do with densities as though additional units being created. The configuration of the lots remains the same. The perimeter outline of any four-unit building stays the same so. Beats and bounds description of the lot that creates. The four-unit condo remains the same. If this ordinance is enacted and if a buyer chooses to go with a more narrow unit. The side yard setbacks to the end units will increase. And again we've talked about this as as a marketing option for the developers and. And I don't believe the board saw any major issues with the concept again no change in density no real change in the the planning for the project. There will need to be a final as-built on a recording of a final plan once the units are constructed and we understand. What was in being built but I think it's it's ready for consideration by the board this evening.
To my just for information for the public that's going to be a smaller unit like their their other units are. Wider and bedrooms and the basement finished so this one's going to be smaller.
Yeah still not. 28-foot wide units.
It's a recent size.
Big unit yeah.
But that's why the price is lowers for that unit.
Actually correct.
So it's like.
And and either either Engineer Woodrow or or manager Hoffman. What doesn't this also clean up some ambiguity within the in the text?
It it does Dennis correct. Yeah the current ordinance is not very clear with regard to a differentiation between single-family untached single-family detached homes. And so this really does take a step forward in cleaning out what might be a bit of the confusing language in the current code.
Are there are there any questions from the board?
I have a question the. Semi-detached buildings. Which I guess would be.
Basically.
They they're the larger ones 45 feet.
The lots are that large yes.
Right right okay. And the this one is for the.
Single-family attached.
Attached okay which are only being.
Seventy detached is basically a twin home.
Right.
Single-family attached is more of a townhouse.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or or comments from the board? Are there any comments from the the public either in the room or on Zoom?
We don't see any.
Okay Solicitor Rice do we need to review the full? The the full ordinance or can we just make can I just make a motion to approve it as described?
Yeah there's no reason to read it I mean basically we're remending. Section 20882. Do attempt describe reducing the establishing 45 feet lot with semi-detached. And the 28 feet for single-family attached dwellings and that that is it there's nothing else. Happening here so. You know there is a. Representative of the applicants here and councils here but I don't. You know if there's any questions to to any of them. You know it's pretty straightforward amendment but Dennis no reason to read the whole thing.
Okay alright.
If you vote on it you can proceed on.
Yeah and unless there's unless there's questions or comments from from the applicant or I. I would just like to move to to make a motion to approve the ordinance number 779 as described.
So motion's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 779 as described all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed no opposed the ayes have it thank you commissioners.
Next item.
Consideration.
Thank you.
The next item on my agenda is to review and consider the preliminary and final plan for. 3382 Brayborn and that's a number 24-07. And just as a reminder this is a subdivision of a 1.5 acre property that's zoned as RSD 2. The applicant proposes to subdivide the lot into one 3.5 acre lot which is where the existing dwelling. Is now and then a second 1.5 acre lot to be developed with one single home or one single family dwelling there. Engineer Woodrow is do you want to review any of your findings or or notes what we what we went through quickly for the?
Sure again Dennis this this plan did appear before the planning commission on two occasions. The first time was at the planning commission the application lacked sufficient detail. To show the planning commission and to our community that this lot that there's being proposed for creation. Could meet all ordinance requirements especially related to Steve Slope's. Woodland protections floodplains wetland perimeter buffers. There was a revised submission made where all of that data was provided. I have checked it against our ordinances and it is now shown to be a compliant lot. That can indeed be built with a new single-family home and still remain in conformance with our regulations. There are a couple of waivers that are being sought from this applicant tonight related to roadway improvements. Our ordinance does provide the board the ability to require winding curving sidewalk along the frontage of any subdivisions being proposed. That's certainly true for larger applications on Brayborn where there really are no existing improvements. Very little opportunity for future improvements the waiver may be something that might be appropriate for the matter. Reasonable request.
Okay. All right, Township Planner Phillips, do you have any comments or anything you want to share?
The applicant has addressed all of our comments.
At this time, I, I'd like to ask if there's any questions or comments from the board?
Dennis, just to clarify, just want to, so the public can hear, the, the property said it's five point one acres. And one, the main property will be three point five six six acre, an acre lot for the, for the existing single family dwelling that's already there. And then the second lot that they're proposing will be one point five three two three, that size lot. And that's what they showed us.
Right, is that, yeah.
And it's in the RSD two residential district, which is in compliance, am I correct?
Yep, yeah, they're much larger than the minimum required lot size for that district.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mueller.
Any, any additional comments or questions from the board? Any, any comments from the public or those there on Zoom?
There are none, Dennis.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty five dash zero seven as described.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution twenty five oh seven as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Commissioners, motion's passed.
The next item on my agenda is review the Planning Commission appointments. And just to, as a, as a reminder, and I believe we, we talked about this last month, that there were some Planning Commission members that were, you know, cycling out at the end of their term. One is for Ward two, and that's Virginia Overberger. Ward three, Andy Frey, and the at-large member, David Rubin. So they are set to expire on May eighteenth. And we did get a letter of interest in the township from Ward, from a Ward three resident. So the township staff will be coordinating those interviews as well as the incumbents who are, who are still interested. And we'll do, you know, as we done, as we have done in the past, to have some interviews and to make a recommendation at the, I believe, the April meeting. Are there any comments or questions for those three from the board?
None.
And then, and then just one other note of interest. Shelley Margolis has moved out of Lowermoreland, so there's a vacancy also in Ward one.
Yes, Commissioner Mueller and I also spoke to Commissioner Howson, who represents that ward, to see if she knew anyone that might be interested in serving. And also.
Actually, I worked with two different people, shared. As residents, they might call, they'll be submitted very soon.
Thank you, Commissioner Howson. Thank you, Commissioner Mueller.
The next item on my agenda is the Building Officials Report. And since I can't see who's there, if Ted or Jill would like to present that.
It looks like, sorry, it's Ted. This month, we had nine meetings with homeowners or contractors. We've been to court twice, one for O'Briens at twenty eight ninety five Point Road. And the other one was for Dan Street for the cats. We had thirty three permits issued for the month. We had eight complaint inspections, zoning hearing board meeting, and nine UNO issued. Any questions?
I want to thank your hard work with recorded both. And I know Commissioner Pace and I have been in constant contact about the condition of O'Briens. And I know he's been in contact with you. And I'm glad to see that the open second floor windows that weren't there are now boarded up. So, and thank you. Thanks for all your hard work.
And next, what about, did September get back to spout all that trash in NV lot?
We've been mounting them a couple of times. For a while, they were not pretty.
They were pretty consistent getting back and cleaning it up.
Now I'm not sure what happened, so we'll try again.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. And the last item on my agenda is my liaison reports. And I've already spoken about the Planning Commission. The Penny Pack Ecological Restoration Trust, they did not meet last month. However, we do have a meeting coming up towards the end of March. So I'll report on that meeting at the, at the next Board of Commissioners meeting. That concludes my updates for the agenda. I'll return it back to you, President Kurtz.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mueller. Next, the Chair recognizes Commissioner Canelli, Chair of the Public Safety Committee, Joe.
Thank you, Ms. But first item on my agenda for this evening are LMPD Personnel Matters. Board met in executive session prior to the meeting tonight to review two personnel matters with Chief Smith. Two items will then be voted on now during the public board meeting during this session. First motion I would like to make is a motion to accept Chief Smith's disciplinary recommendation for Sergeant Cullen.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to accept, accept Chief Smith's disciplinary recommendation for Sergeant Cullen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, the motion's passed. Next.
The second one is a motion to accept Chief Smith's disciplinary recommendations for Officer O'Neill.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to accept Chief Smith's disciplinary recommendation for Officer O'Neill. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Commissioners. These are always horrible.
Yes, so. Next up on my agenda is authorization to bid on HV library capital projects. During the board's twenty twenty five budget process, we discussed two capital projects for the HV library ability. Upper and lower level door replacement and community room roof replacement. No specific funding was approved. However, there will be a hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and forty six dollars in our library fund capital reserve this year. Based on proposals Steve Warner, Warner has received, we are hopeful we can complete both projects within the available funds. Since co-star vendors are not available, we are requesting authorization from the board to bid these two projects. Bid results will be brought back to the board for consideration once received. Is there any questions from the board members on this?
Not many questions. I just didn't return them getting a lot of different estimates.
Any questions from the public?
And then also, real quick, just as we were whispering, with the bid limits for twenty twenty five, it's possible that the two projects may come in below the bidding limit, which would just require three quotes.
Right.
So if that happens for either of them, then we would proceed with that. If the quotes come in above, then we'll advertise both for public.
Got you. Any questions from the public on this? No. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the bidding, the two HV library capital projects as described.
Thank you. Motion's been moved and seconded to authorize bidding the two Honey's Valley Library Capital Projects as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Go to it, Steve.
Next up, Chief Smith, your report.
Thank you. My full report was submitted, just some highlights of things. One thousand six hundred eighty two calls per service in the month of February. So a little bit down from January, which is good for the office, a little bit of a break, but still a lot of call. Biggest crime thing, crime trend going on last month. We did have some mausoleum door stolen. So you may have seen the news report on it. We were one of the townships that was hit by that. It was also included in Abington, Lower Southampton, Radnor, and some others. So it's a regional issue going along, going around. We're working together with those departments. We do have a lot of monitoring sites that we can use. Our civilian employees have been pretty diligent, watching every single scrapyard transaction from every surrounding scrapyard to try and find these. The good news is what we're finding is that many of these scrapyards don't take that type of thing that we're, that are in the databases. So they're going to be a little difficult to catch and track down. However, we are trying, and like I said, because of the regional thing, it went on the news and we were not, we were part of that as well. So the next thing up is we did have a batch of our new supervisors from last year complete their one-year probationary period. So four of our corporals and one of our sergeants doing very well. They got quarterly evaluations and we're trying to do the best we can to make sure we have the best leadership we can for our community. So I just want to congratulate those corporals and that sergeant who are passing their one-year probationary period after getting promoted. Some community events from February, pretty busy month. We did an internet safety presentation for a local Girl Scout troop, which always goes over well. We had, on February thirteenth, we had a mock trial at our local district court, as well as an introduction to the Police Department, and then a drug and internet safety presentation that was put on for a group of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders that the judge had set up to come in. So we were part of that. It was very well received. There was a big thanks from Judge Mark for us taking part in that. Also, we had our first ever Community Thursday event. That's something put on by Bevel Bakery. They invite community groups to come on out. This was the first time we, we tried it. Very gracious hosts, hoping to do more later in the year with some different squads of officers. The biggest seller at the event was Thor, and especially when he stepped up on the table. And everybody came running over, taking pictures. So, you know, they did come to see the officers too, but Thor was a much bigger draw than the human officers. Yes, they frowned upon. We had some other officers try and get one on the table, but it just didn't go. Some upcoming events, very excited. We're going to do our first ever partnership with Autism Cares to do our Crime Scene Club. So we already do that for our community, but this one's going to be geared towards children with autism. So we're going to do a pilot program of that in April, May, and June. And hopefully, we'll continue to do that every single year. Next up, coming up in May is going to be our Touch a Truck event that we take part in with Upper Southampton. And that's what we have coming up at least in the next couple of months. Any questions or?
Thank you, Chief. I have a question about the cemetery because there's a lot of those little roads and everything. And, you know, I don't know how we could help them unless you patrol in, around the main roads. Maybe we can suggest that the cemetery, but it's not our, it's not our purview. But, you know, if they would close off their entrances after a certain time, it might help them.
Yeah.
Because I don't think, you know, some criminals.
We are in there.
Could go in there and really carry one of those mausoleum doors out, so they'd have to drive in.
I can't tell you in my years, there's, there's a lot of people that I know the cemetery doesn't, you know, they don't encourage it. But people do come and pay their respects at night. So I think they'd be a little concerned doing that or with old times. But we can certainly suggest that to them. They've been very helpful to us in giving us information and helping us out with this. They also have their points of contact from other cemeteries that they've been reaching out to to also try and get us some information. So, but that's certainly something.
Do you know if they have anybody patrolling at night?
They do not. They do not. They don't have anybody that comes in. But we are in there quite a bit because, I mean, just over the years, things do happen in closed cemeteries because of Starbuck and secluded. So we get cars that go in there and a lot of different things. Our officers are in there quite a bit.
I appreciate that, though. That gives me comfort. Thank you.
No questions. Mind anybody else heard it? Thanks, Fire Marshal Shelley.
Good evening, Commissioners. Just a couple of quick things in my report, just to highlight. As you well know, we had probably the largest commercial building fire in Montgomery County back on, on February seventeenth at the Standard Press deal in Abington Township. Montgomery County resources for under emergency management was overwhelmed. As you saw in my report, I probably used every part of the alphabet, all the different companies that were there and organizations to help out. Couple of things too, on that week, we had, besides the SPS fire, we also had a working fire on Buck Road, which Chief Shoemaker will go over. And I just want to thank Abington's Fire Marshal, even as tired as he was, he helped me out with that one. And I covered two for him that week. And I want to thank the Happer Fire Marshal for assisting me on the Buck Road fire. We had finally, the daytime staff between Burnath and Huntington Valley finally got together. And we participated in the fire alarm test at Carson Terrace. We had about a week's worth of problems, fire watch, sprinkler system was down, fire alarm was down. So we did a, a full fire inspection slash fire alarm test, doors, all the horn strobes and everything. We had four violations that we found. They have been fixed. And I do the final inspection on Thursday. Code enforcement and I and Steve, our building coefficient, we've been meeting with Huntington Valley Skilled Nursing to get them back online, to get, to get the residents back in. There is a timeline. We're just working on a couple of final permits and inspections. And then as far as on the Fire Marshal end, I was, I did assist the ATF, the alcohol, alcohol tobacco on my arms with the investigation. It's basically a once in a lifetime deal, and I'm glad we don't, all the time. It was a national call out. I got to work with the Philadelphia Agent Mike Hope, who has taught a lot of class, is here in Bucks in Montgomery County. I also just wanted to thank Chief Shoemaker and the code enforcement officers Ted and Jill for covering a few of my calls. And for Chris Hoffman, for giving me the opportunity to work with them for the, for a week or two down at the SPS. Go ahead. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Any questions from the public? Thank you both. Chief Shoemaker.
All right, good evening, everyone. Our report's been submitted to joint report between the two communities. As you see, it formatted a little different this time into a narrative-based report. And we also include some performance standards and air will talk a little bit about. The first section is meetings I've attended, both the council meetings in the borough and also Commissioners' meetings here, with a number of meetings throughout the county and different organizations that happened throughout the month. The next section covers the training. There's been a tremendous amount of training along between the two organizations, particularly with the tower ladder. There's been a lot of different platoon shifts that have to be trained on it, the sniping guys that come in that are different each day. We get them out, they get them training. So the joint training on that particular item has been tremendous. And there's so much time being put into that, and hats off to the staff and the volunteers for getting that done. In addition to that, we also started with our joint training between the two organizations for the nighttime training for the volunteer staff, which along with the career staff, it's on during that. And then a successful training night as well with that. And the stipend crew continues to train during the daytime with the career staff up at the Burnath and Fire Company. And they spent quite a bit of hours throughout the month on that. We've done a number of interviews over the last month as well. You know, our numbers are up for where we want to be for our personnel, but through attrition, we lose some folks. So we're constantly interviewing and bringing folks onto the staff, both in the full-time and the premium and part-time levels. Administratively, myself, along with some officers from the EMS staff, under the coordination of Commissioner Canelli, met with representatives from Jefferson Hospital, Ben Salem Rescue Squad, and the Montgomery County Health Department in relations to a mobile stroke unit availability to our community. We sat down and listened to a presentation that was put on by these organizations. We looked at the information that were presented, and I got to tell you, I was pretty impressed with what they put out to us. Currently, we're reviewing the medical science behind it. It's in the hands of Dr. Overberger, who's our command physician right now for the EMS side of things. We're waiting to get his results back. And then I think a decision will be made whether we're going to do a trial basis on that to see how it works out. Basically, what we're looking at is a unit that brings the hospital service right to the resident at the house. And in a stroke condition, time matters. And the sooner they can figure out the type of problem that's occurring, the proper medication can be applied. And then it cuts down on the long-term effects of everything that's going on when you experience that type of event, as well as the recovery time zone app. As far as response statistics, I just wanted to take a couple of seconds here to go over the improvements that have happened. And this is the performance-based portion of what we wanted to talk about. As you can see, I put in there three years' worth of statistics for the Huntington Valley Station nineteen. You see, back in twenty twenty three, we're meeting our minimum standard that we establish in the communities forty nine percent of the time. Grilled report in twenty twenty five are showing fifty four percent of the time being. Now, that may not seem like a lot, but incrementally is a huge number, a huge increase. And that's attributed to the resource management that we're trying to reallocate to the different time periods. The stipend group of the volunteers are really starting to step up as best they can and cover as much as they can with that. And that's a big piece of that. Unfortunately, the reporting system that we use, and you'll note in my, my notes there, it's a little bit skewed. So Kate and I are trying to work on how do we extract this information on a more solid basis and to make sure that we're getting the correct numbers on that. For the Burnath and Station nineteen one, you'll see we are at seventy five percent of twenty twenty three. We've increased up to eighty eight point five percent coverage, which is a tremendous increase as well. Remember, this is our interim plan as we move forward to where we want to be in the future. So the improvements there, we're showing that changes are making a difference in what we're doing. So the improvements there, we're, we're showing that, that changes are making a difference in what we're doing. Uh, calls of interest is the Fire Marshal mentioned on February seventeenth for standard press deal. We're special called down on the second alarm for the tower ladder. Tower ladder was down there in service for. Uh, probably about six hours before we froze up and couldn't operate anymore. I have to tell you, in, in forty-eight years of doing this business, that was probably some of the most brutal weather conditions we've ever operated in. Everything was just freezing as, as soon as we were getting into service. We had to relocate at one point because of the fire wave was traveling towards us, got into a better position. But again, once we get into service with the cold for the weathers, everything was freezing. In fact, the next day, myself and Chief Middleman went down to retrieve our hose, because once we got all aligned, we left our hose there for the next trucks to come in. We went down to roll it up, and we were really folding it up to bring it back to the station. It was just frozen solid inside. With that said, that next day was February eighteenth, and as Fire Marshal mentioned, we had a fire on, uh, Buck Road, thirty fifty-one Buck Road in Bernathan Borough. For a structured fire. This was a house that was well involved on arrival. It was through the roof. Uh, it was a two-minute response from the time I got dispatched to the time we got on medication. Now, the factors behind this are the house was without power due to the storm conditions that have gone through. Pico was just about ready to re-energize that area up. But, uh, during that period of time when they were out of power, it appears that they may have been, uh, utilizing some alternative heating devices in a greenhouse. It was attached to the back of the property. A fire occurred and it got up into the attic space through the soaps and, uh, it was off and running. As you probably saw in the pictures, the tower ladder was in service on that fire as well, and it served us well on that. Again, we were in service there for probably about two and a half hours, and, uh, everybody did a great job on that. Our mutual aid partners helped us set up with that as well. And as far as statistics, as far as coal bombs go, you'll see there, um, for the EMS for the month, a one hundred and forty-eight calls. We have three hundred and twenty-five year-to-date calls. On the fire calls in Bernathan, there was thirty-three calls for the month. They are up to seventy-two calls for the month, or for the year. And in the Huntington Valley Station nineteen, forty-one calls for the month, and they're up to eighty-three calls for the year. That concludes my report.
I have a question.
Sure.
With regard to training, um, the firefighters, or say the tower ladder, or the, even the engine. If there's new stipend approved, just even for the, the trucks that we have. Um, do they, you know, after their training's finished, you know, you feel they're ready to operate either one of those vehicles? Do they, are they given a certification, like, or anything like?
Yeah, we have a process for the new truck where there's a, a, a series of check-offs that they have to complete. Once they meet the satisfy, or satisfied by Chief Middleman and Chief Weiss of the two, there was two station chiefs. They authorize them to operate the vehicles, when they just identify me where we stand.
Thank you.
One thing I did feel to mention real quickly, we had a meeting, uh, with Commissioner Hugheson on the Bernathan Fire Company Alums Building. And it was really an enlightening conversation and, uh, educational portion for me, because I don't really get involved in it too much. But we were able to look at our big rates, our medication rates, our, uh, absent. Payment people and Ruth has some ideas for us. Chris was there. We looked at it. So we've all, all got a good understanding of it. So it was a great meeting. I, I failed to put that into here, but I did want to mention that, that we spent, oh, what, about two hours?
Yeah.
And then we got a chance to like, uh, tour the station and see what they actually have going on there. That's all I have.
Any questions from the board additional? Anything from the public? Thank you, Chief Shoemaker. That takes me to my liaison positions for simple service. I have nothing to report. For the library, Board of Trustees for the Huntington Valley Library held their annual meeting on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Three board members' terms ended, and we thank them for their service from the library. Those leading the board are Jack Bernstein, President. Judith Tricon, Treasurer, and Jeffrey Ruben, Trustee. We welcome three new board members as well, Barbara Kova, Patricia Balitsky, and Jacqueline Keeney. Tuesday, March twenty-fifth at seven PM, join the library for historical interpreter Alyssa Dupay and Kurt Radad. Radabag.
I did so well with the prior.
I know. Right. That one I'm not making. As they bring Martha and George Washington to life at HVL. Coming here from America's first couple, please call the library. We'll visit the website to RSVP. And finally, on Saturday, March twenty-ninth at two PM, join the Huntington Valley Library for Wildlife in Pennsylvania. What do wildlife rehabilitators do? What role do they play in helping wildlife? Find out during this engaging program, full of stories and interesting facts about local wildlife. RSVP. That's all I have. Back to you, Denise.
Thank you so much, Schnurten Alley. Next, the Chair recognizes Commissioner Pace, Chair of the Public Works Committee, Commissioner Pace.
Thank you, Denise. Uh, first item for me is, I don't know, review and consider DCNR C two P two grant application resolution. So Ratu is potentially preparing. A DCNR C two P two grant application seeking funds to replace. Lower more than park building and place some additional amenities in the playground area. This was another item that we discussed during the twenty twenty-five budget process. If successful, the grant. Fund then will help maintain the park and rec fund capital, cash balance for future projects. So basically, the resolution authorized, uh, Manager Hoffman to submit all the documentation for the, um, for the grant. Uh, the grant timeline could take about six months to see if we get approved or denied. Is there any questions from the board?
DCNR, is that state?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to let everyone know, we've been talking about this building for a really long time. It's decrepit. They can't get any parts for the toilets or the sinks, right, Steve? Per our plumber. Um, and I think, when was it built? Was it seventies or sixties? Seventies. And, yeah, it's in, it's very poor shape. So every year around about this time, we talk about it, but we find out priorities. So just to let everyone know.
Yeah, a lot of the residents are tired of using porta-potties.
Yes.
Um, any questions from the public? All right. So I'd like to make a motion to approve res- resolution number twenty-five dash zero E as described.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty-five oh eight as described, although there's a favorably signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Sure. All of our residents will appreciate that facility as we move forward.
Item P, review and consider authorization to bid the Arley Grant Project. So the township received three hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred dollars for the Arley Grant to upgrade the traffic signals at Welsher Valley. And Welsh and Lieberman, the permits are almost done. Um. The anticipated, anticipated schedule is as follows. We'd like to do the advertisement of the bid March eighteenth. Open the bid on May second and bid consideration by May thirteenth. And this timeline would allow the signal upgrades to begin this summer. Are there any questions from the board?
No.
From the public? All right. I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertising the bid for the Arley Project as described.
Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Hausen. The motion's been moved and seconded to authorize advertising the bid for the Arle- Arley Project as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Thank you, Commissioners. The ayes have.
Uh, item Q's Public Works, kick it over to Steve.
Let's go over a few things if you want, real quick. We're going to open our bids for, uh, broken circling March twenty-sixth. So hopefully, I think you guys still approve that at the April eighth meeting. Um, we have plenty of leaf compost process. It's in the bin, so any residents looking for it, it's in your vegetable grounds. Great stuff. It's in the parking lot. You can pick it up anytime of the day, uh, seven days a week. Um, Commissioner Kurtz mentioned, uh, the high school, we, we did a, a park cleanup. They did, uh, it was about three pickup trucks, loads of trash they picked up in a couple of hours.
Yeah.
Unbelievable amount of trash.
The kids were amazing.
Did a great job. Um. With, with the storms we had, believe it or not, this nice weather. Couple of weeks ago, it was snow and rain and windy. Um, we lost a major traffic light at Byburn Huntington Pike. I taxi line fell, ride that controller cabinet, so. That's on a temporary cabinet now, so if you get any complaints about the timing of light, that's what it is. It's just operating temporarily until we can get a new cabinet. Um, the turf at the Valley Center, it's due for deep cleaning, and we'll do our G max testing on that. That's going to be April twenty-first, right before the school starts and summer stopper. Um, baseball's starting up, um, meeting with them tomorrow to go over all their stuff. Uh, spring soccer starts the end of this month, Danamary Avenue. They have two fields they set up down there. We'll help them set them up. Um, we had a. Big storm pipe problem on Welsh Road in Gloria Day. We've dealt with this before. That pipe actually runs under Huntington Pike from, uh, Gloria Day with a septum stone parking light is, it's an old corrugated pipe. We've fixed it before, and it, it came back, but we were able to repair it again.
Steve, I did forget to mention one thing that you and I spoke about is the plant, the trees from Pennsylvania Horticulture Society are coming in early this year. Much earlier than our day.
They'll be in the first week.
First week in April. So what we'll do is, we, and because Leah has advertised all our events, we'll put it on Facebook. And if anyone from the public, any residents, anyone wants to join, they can join Public Works in.
I can do that. They will do.
Yeah, thank you.
Wednesday, uh, or, uh.
Yeah, true plan.
Yard basement again. So good thing Republic actually contacted me today. They asked if we wanted to start early again with the nice weather. So I think we're going to start at twenty-six, which will be a week early, not this coming Wednesday, uh, two Wednesdays from here. So I'm going to start a week early to twenty-six. I'll send some to Leah and see if we can post that. We've got a few people comment. If anyone has anything now, come on in, you can dump it at the trash truck. I have like four people today.
And Director Werner also, uh, advised that, uh, Public Works, I saw them in Laurel Park, and they were, and room in the fields. Getting ready for the upcoming.
During the mud dries up, we get out of the park and store that way. So I know they want to get out of there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Wait, Omar is my liaison, HVACA. They're. Uh, we're named, thank you Denise, the egg hunt and parade where there was a conflict in the, the egg hunt moved today. For the parade, open day parade is going to be April fifth. Around nine AM. Um, so Chief Solting will be involved with traffic control over there. It will be. Um, that'll kick off the baseball season. Basketball is almost over. Uh, they're in the midst of playoffs. The eighth grade Hurricanes are playing right now. As we speak, they're losing by three in the fourth quarter. That's my daughter's team. I'm getting updates. They're in the semi-finals.
Yeah.
And then, uh, my son's third grade travel basketball team, the Mamas are in the championship. Um, sometime next week, we're waiting on our opponent in a date. And then, uh, after that, spring soccer, C set picking up behind Mary. And.
Sixth grade travels also going to the championship. My daughter's on the team. That should be there this weekend or early next week.
Sixth grade travel, the Wolves and the Thunder. The Thunder.
And just to mention too, we had a commendation this evening for Eagle Scout. The, the young, fine young man lives in my ward. And he couldn't make it this evening because the high school, they, they have, they're in swim championships in their way. So we have some real athletes coming up. Yes, and Commissioner Pace, no thanks needed. In the community.
And then thank my agenda items.
Thank you, Commissioner Pace. Next is Commissioner Blanton's, uh, agenda items. He's Chair of the Ordinance Committee. In his absence, I will take his agenda items this evening. First item is review and consider traffic related ordinance. So February, the board authorized advertising our, the ordinance that is in our packet tonight. Add stop signs at Hollowell, the Hollowell Drive intersection with Mansion Road. Um, solicitor races office advertise the ordinance as prescribed law. And, um, since it was, uh, it was advertised tonight as a public hearing, so. On that ordinance, and that would, that would really be for stop sign on Hollowell Drive, traveling east. At the intersection, intersection with Mansion Road and Hollowell Drive, uh, traveling west at the intersection of Mansion Drive. An alternative or two, so.
Okay, just. Uh, for the record, the ordinance is advertised for tonight for a public hearing. Um, we do traffic ordinances, uh. We have public hearings on them, and, um, this is pretty straightforward. It's a stop sign at the two intersections as described by Commissioner Kurtz. And, uh, just to open up the hearing, is there any public comment on the ordinance? For tonight? Uh, the board has any discussion on this, uh, pretty straightforward. You know, if there's no discussion, then I'd recommend the board, uh, proceed with the vote.
Anyone on Zoom? Just to give the opportunity. Okay. For good Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Mueller?
No comments.
Okay. So we have ordinance number seven eighty in front of us. Like to make a motion. To approve ordinance seven eighty, uh, as described tonight, uh, regarding the two stop signs on Hollowell Drive.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number seven eighty. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Mueller, did you say aye?
I said aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Yay.
Ruth, we discussed this.
One day.
It's all right. It's fine. It's, it's fine now. Do you want to express it? Because.
Well, I need some votes.
It's fine.
It's time for. Well, it was to me, but it's not to everybody.
Well, it was to me too, because I spent, we went to the last meeting.
Sweetie, you are fine. We are good.
Motion's been moved and seconded, um, and the motion's passed. Uh, we have five arrest signs and one. Okay. The massage, uh, review massage, alternative therapy ordinance is the next. Is the next item on Commissioner Blanton's, uh, committee. I will, yes.
Yeah, let me, let me just.
You review that, the whole ordinance.
Let me just give some background on this, and the chief's here, in case there's any technical. So, uh, many municipalities surrounding Lower Warland, and I know of some in other parts of Bucks and Montgomery County. Have had these licensing, uh, ordinances for massage facilities for years. Um, there's, uh, been issues with some of these facilities in terms of, uh. Uh, criminal activity, um, and, and other types of things that I don't know if it's necessary to get into. There's an issue of sanitary facilities and, uh, and, and problems that have been pretty consistent for a number of years. So there's, uh, a proliferation, I think, in Southeast Pennsylvania in the suburbs, and I've seen it of not only massage. Facilities, but alternative therapies, uh, which is something a little bit different. Uh, and new, and I'll just explain, I'll give you a definition of alternative therapy. What that is, is massage therapists have to be licensed by the state. So the state licenses them. So if they have their license, they're good to go. Uh, alternative therapy is things like, uh, acupressure, ancient bodywork therapy. Polarity, this is in the ordinance, polarity therapy, uh, Raikyu, Shiatsu, reflexology. So anything involving, you know, one person, uh, touching the other person in, in whatever fashion. Um, that's the alternative therapy. So what this ordinance will do, will set up a licensing regime for both the. Uh, massage facilities and the alternative therapy facilities. Applications would have to come into the township. The township would review the application, uh, and would issue a license. Township would have the right to inspect the facilities to make sure they meet certain sanitary requirements, uh, sizes. And, and things like that. So it's a, it's a way to discourage, uh. You know, behavior or criminality that may be occurring at some of these facilities. Uh, it gives the township some oversight over these facilities, and it's an annual licensing, uh, ordinance. So that's what's on the agenda tonight, uh, is to mainly authorize this to be advertised. I would then advertise it, and it would come back, uh, next month, uh, for adoption by the board. And, and as I said, the, there's two levels, there's two types of license, one for the. there's two level, there's two types of license, one for the massage, one for the other alternative therapies. The massage therapies are licensed by the state. Uh, so to to a large extent, and we want to see their license for those facilities, we'll make sure that that they're actually licensed. And and then all of them will have to meet the ordinance criteria and uh this is not an unusual situation in in most municipalities where there's, you know, denser population. Uh, I did one of these about ten years ago up in Quakertown. And at the time, it was just massage therapy. There was no alternative therapy. So they're looking to revise that ordinance and uh so it's, if the board has any questions for me, I mean, that that's what this is. It's a, it's a licensing regulatory, some basic standards to uh, you know, to address uh these type of facilities. You see, you can answer, like I said, any, anything else beyond that. His experience with other
If this is ultimately agreeable to the board to advertise, the second component that we would bring back with the advertised ordinance would be the fee schedule, uh which would be done by resolution that would establish the fee, so the licenses. And we would just make sure that those are consistent with our neighbors.
And this is just making sure that a business follows the right protocol, because they should be licensed with the state of Pennsylvania anyway to perform these types of, you know, massages or or alternative like Reiki or whatever.
Well, the alternative therapies are not licensed by the state. So I mean, that's one of the keys here. The massage therapy is of state rules and regulations. These are other types of uh different procedures like reflexology and Reiki, the, they are not licensed by the state. So this would be local government, the township's opportunity to have some oversight and some regulation, so they're, so that they're all covered. So it's just a, for tonight, uh, you know, authorize the advertisement of the ordinance for here.
I'm in favor of this and Commissioner Blanton's in favor of this. Um, anyone?
I'm sorry, Dennis, did you want to ask your question?
He says in favor.
Okay. When, if we pass it next month, when would it, would it go into effect immediately?
Yes.
And then what kind of a grace period are we looking for our current?
I mean, you know, I can, I can address it. There's two types of, the two types of licensing, I think that the township would, my recommendation would be, and I think we've identified maybe three or four facilities in the township. We send them a letter, we send them a copy of the ordinance. Uh, you know, they have to apply for the license. And if, for example, uh, the grace period, I think, I mean, there may be some parts of this that some of these facilities such as size, uh, there's a, there's a room size for some of these, maybe they can't do that. I mean, I would suggest that they be grandfathered in if it's that kind of a situation, uh, something like that. Um, you know, but anybody new coming into the township would have to meet the licensing requirements and unless there was some kind of waiver given by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, I can tell you, I've never seen that happen on any of these ordinances. You know, folks either comply or they leave town with the licensing requirements. I mean, that, that's the way this typically will work. They'll find some other municipality that they can operate in that doesn't have a licensing requirement. I mean, that's, you know like I said, this has been around at least fifteen years that I can remember going back or seeing this ordinance and uh uh, but that would be, Ruth, just that, you know, just if there's certain things that they can't be and it's a legitimate operation, then, you know, they would, they would be grandfathered.
Can we do it on a case by case basis? I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to grandfather anybody unless there was some, you know, discussion first.
Yeah, it would be okay. I think it would have to be Dennis.
Okay.
And also, you know, I, I like the part of the ordinance where it discusses disinfecting instruments, materials in the rooms and the surfaces. Okay.
So any other questions?
John, when I was reading through the ordinance, there were certain exemptions for already licensed facilities like healthcare. And so, so they're exempt from having to get secondary license for this, like say at the nursing home.
Chiropractor.
Yeah, chiropractor, school, whatever.
Yep, they're, they're, uh, they're exempt.
So basically, it's free standing home.
Hospitals, nursing homes, medical clinics, physicians, surgeons, physical therapy, chiropractors and osteopaths. Uh, if they're licensed in the Commonwealth, they're exempt. Also barber shops or other practices licensed by the Department of Cosmology. So athletic programs and schools, they're exempt.
And a lot of barber shops in the area.
Does anyone on the board have any comments or questions or Solicitor Rights? Public comment? Any public comment on this ordinance? No one in the room? How about on Zoom? No one to do? Everyone's okay with that? I'll make a motion to authorize advertising the massage and alternative therapy ordinance as described.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to authorize advertising the ordinance as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I don't hear any opposed. Thank you. It's passed. Next is uh on Commissioner Blanton's review zoning hearing board agenda and decision. Uh, there are four applications on the zoning hearing boards, March agenda. I believe that will take place Thursday, March twentieth at seven PM in this meeting room. Uh, one is the application number twenty five oh three. It's the application of Republic HVAC LLC for sixteen thirty-three Republic Road who seek a variance to permit accessory outdoor storage without enclosure. The second one is application twenty five dash oh four, the application of Ronald Betts of five sixteen Welsh Road who seeks a variance to allow the installation of a six foot high privacy fence, a decorative gate with automatic opener and a four foot high split rail fence on the property. Next one is application twenty five oh five. It's the application of Andre Levitsky and Marina Betson of five seventy-three Philip Road. They seek a variance to increase their lot coverage to thirty three point seven percent, where twenty five percent is permitted for a patio to be located in the side and rear setbacks. The owners have previously installed these improvements and have previously been unsuccessful in their applications for relief. Next is application number twenty five oh six, and that's the application of Lena Shernyak of eight three seven or Phil Lane who seeks a variance to allow a reduction in aggregate sideways setback to thirty three point four total feet, where forty feet is required to allow for a one story addition. Does anyone have any questions or board or comments regarding any of these applications? Those are the ones that will be heard. Anyone from the public, public comment? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. Uh, the zoning hearing board made two decisions at the February meeting. Uh, it was application twenty four thirty-seven. It was the application of Alex and Anna McPerry of seven twenty Lisa Lane, who sought a variance to permit an increase in lot coverage to thirty six percent. The variance was granted. Uh, next was the application number twenty five oh one, was the application of Daniel and Kimberly Keller of thirty seven hundred Abidale Drive, who sought a variance to permit an increase in lot coverage to thirty four percent. The variance was granted. And I believe that concludes the zoning hearing board agenda and decisions. Uh, next is Commissioner Blanton's liaison report. He did attend the uh zoning hearing board uh meeting for February and he is on the Building Code Board of Appeals and they have not uh had any opportunity or reason to. So that concludes Commissioner Blanton's uh agenda items for this evening. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Howson, Chair of the Public Property Committee, Ruth.
Now, this month, the Historic Architecture Review Board met, um, also known as HARV. Um, and we had two applications before us. The first one was from Worm Block Holding. It's actually uh the law, uh, and one of the law offices on Huntington Pike. Um, he wants to replace his existing slate roof with asphalt shingles. As much as we'd love to keep the slate roof, we cannot cause him a six figure replacement cost. We want him to keep him here in town. So uh we found that the replacement acceptable and uh he asked which shingles we liked. And we gave him that as well. The second application twenty five dash oh two is from Zig Shack um, uh, on Huntington Pike. It's a smoke shop uh near Bewell in that that off street mall there. Um, and they asked uh, for permission for their signage. Um, we did not, they, the HARV board did not uh approve the color of the current signs. Felt it was not within keeping of the historic district. Um, was a very bright, very cherry red. Um, and we are looking for them to tone that down a little bit. And I believe, actually I know, um, the Chair of our board already went in and discussed it with um, the owner of Zig Shack. Have you been back to it?
Yeah, um, Vincent came in today. They, they picked a color, so we're all on the same page.
Yeah, uh, the, the rest of the HARV board gave Vince, Vincent Rivera, the pair the authorization to pick the color.
What about the size of the sign on the front of the building? I understand the marquee and that's going to be the standard size with everything else.
Yeah.
But that seems large and
You mean the one on the uh by the street?
No, that one's the standard marking that's out there. On the building itself, they're proposing a secondary larger sign that looks obnoxious and out of proportion.
That's their temporary sign. I don't think their permanent sign is going to be within keeping with the rest of them.
Yeah, so the um sign that they're proposing, they have to keep a six foot, eight inch clear underneath it. So that sign will not be twenty four inches. It'll be nineteen, like eighteen or nineteen inches.
So much smaller than what's illustrated in the picture.
Yes.
Right now, I didn't notice that uh by the street, they actually have a a, a billboardy sign. So um I'm sure that discussion is or will be happening.
I'm glad the color changed, you know, I called you with regard to that, because I wasn't thrilled with that bright red. So I'm glad that that's changing.
That's, this is what the HARV board is for.
Thank you.
Retain the character of historic district here in Lowermore. Does anybody have any questions on those? In the sewer department?
Before you move along.
I'm sorry.
Board actually is the voting entity. So even need to make separate motions for each one to authorize.
A separate motion for each one?
Yes.
Okay.
So hold on, the second one, aren't we tabling until we actually see the color and everything else on this?
Yeah, I guess that's a good question. So if we have what is being recommended, that color is not in the book, right?
Um, so that color that's being recommended is very, very close to the original color that was proposed. So it's very close to the original red.
It's a very great red, I think.
Yes.
Right, I, I agree.
I guess it sounds like we might want to do some follow up with the chair. Yes, to make sure, because ultimately he was authorized and typically this board would follow that, that recommendation. But if we're not comfortable, don't make a motion on the second one.
We will
Yes.
Continue this one and
Ruth, with regard to the first one, what number, what color, the number one, two or three did they want? Two, okay, I like that one.
It matches the
It's the bottom.
Bright apple cherry. Thank you. Well, we'll discuss that another time. I'd like to make the motion, I'm sorry, that we approve uh twenty five oh one uh to allow uh Worm Block Holding on Huntington Pike to shingle their roof.
Is there a second? Motion's been moved and seconded to approve application number twenty five oh one as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. You okay with that, Dennis?
Yes.
Right, okay. So in here, any nays, any nays, any opposed?
I'm not opposed to what John's suggesting. If you want to make that motion, I'll gladly second it and then we can deny this and have them go back and forth with everything redone with appropriate size strongs and everything else.
There, there's a complication that we can discuss. Yeah, yeah. So they, they were willing to work with us. So on the sewer department, which is always very exciting, um, there were uh, three pump stations that were being uh worked on, two are now done. Uh, the third has started. It's on, it's in my word on Hollowell. Um, and uh that should be completed probably by the end of the month. Um, and other than that, it's just the usual, you know, daily flow, lots of stuff happening with that. Um, but just normal maintenance and those kind of things. Does anybody have any questions about the sewers authority?
No more averages or anything going into Philly.
We have not received any that we have seen. So we have some that are being reviewed.
Correct. So, so there's two categories of those exceedances. The one is the one that we're most concerned about and we're actively trying to reduce. Those are the instantaneous flow, like that two consecutive meter hits in five minutes that show an over century span. We have not had one of those now for the better part of a year. There's also a type of exceedance, and this is the one that we're reviewing, where uh it's the average annual flow. So we had an instance, but it's based off of an estimate by Philadelphia. So that's why we're, we haven't paid them and are reviewing them. Where there was high flow at the Filmont and Bivary connection point. And essentially that flow was so high that it impacted the average annual that until we get to a year from the date of that estimate, being like out of the calculation. It, even if you measured zeros, it physically cannot bring down that measurement enough. So it's triggering like two thousand dollar exceedances. So we got flow data from Philadelphia, Mike McCurry is reviewing it, and before I authorize that to go into one of your bill lists, we want to make sure that we actually agree with the way that we did that. So that's the other unique instance.
How much will we sell?
Uh, there are between, so at the beginning, they were a little bit higher because there were more dates that triggered the exceedance. So that one was maybe like that I'd have to look at the number, maybe like twelve thousand dollars, and now they're down to like two. And it's Filmont that they'll be on a quarterly basis.
So we're saying eight thousand dollars and you're going to be roughly.
The, the numbers are not like they were when we first heard about.
Right, and those were the ones that were the instantaneous flows. We are seeing, I think, a combination of just reduced rain as well as the benefit of all of the capital projects that were done to shore up the lanes. And those were the ones that go through the Betters pump station and through the Welsh River.
Our sewer department has been very uh diligent about lining uh the pipes that might have uh, you know, uh leaks and put it easy words. Any other questions? Okay, my liaisons are the Lower Moreland Township Authority, which does not meet this month, and the Historical Architecture Board, which we went over. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Howson. Uh, our agenda items are complete. We'll open up for uh, non-agenda items if anyone would like to address the board. Anyone in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Does anyone have any comments or need to address the board for any reason? Hearing none, make a motion to adjourn. The motion's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify.